We still have a microphone and a podium and an overhead, given the recent break-ins. I do wish they would have taken those orange seats though, I have to tell you, whatever color they are, they are really an eyesore from here, I have to say. It's nice to see all of you out there in the audience. Thank you for coming. I don't want this to be just a monologue where I give a long speech, so I'm just gonna talk about a few things and then open it up for your questions. I'm gonna begin with a story. I've had so many students come into my office and talk about, "Please don't cut my program, don't cut my class," you know, all these kinds of things. And it's been wonderful actually to listen to their stories, to have them tell me. Many of them told me that the things that they've been through, the obstacles in their lives, the many hurdles that they've overcome to even get to Delta College and try to succeed in their lives. I had a student come in the other day, an older student, and she had been through a very serious physical problem in her life, and she told me about it. And, you know, she said that she was concerned about the cuts. And she said that the people in her area were blaming me, and she said, "When they say my name, they spit." You know, so bad. And, you know, well, you take it all with a grain of salt, I guess, and I could understand it. If I was in their place, I'd probably look for the most convenient target too. But we proceeded to talk about the situation, and I explained to her what was happening statewide with the budget and what that meant for Delta College, both in the short run and the long run, as best I could. And explained to her, you know, why this was occurring, that it wasn't anything we asked for, it's not anything that we want, but this is something that's been imposed on us. And it's been very difficult because it is a moving target. We don't know exactly what it's going to be. We have some good ideas, but we don't know yet, even today, exactly what it's going to be. Because they're playing all these political games up in Sacramento. And it was really interesting too, because this woman had traveled around the United States and even out of the U.S. because of her husband's job. He moves from time to time because of the kind of work that he's in. So she's been all over the United States and even in, as I said, other countries. And one of the things she said is that after she had her severe physical problem occurred, she went to a local community college in another state to get help. And they didn't have any help to give her. They didn't have the kind of programs that we have here in California and at Delta College specifically. They just didn't have them. She had been in California before, and she said, "You don't have this, you don't have that." And they said, "No, we'd love to have it, but we don't have it." And she eventually then made her way back to California and came to Stockton and to Delta College. And she said she was just, you know, amazed and pleased by what she saw here at Delta and the wonderful programs that we have that have helped her. And the lesson for me in all of this is that we have been blessed. We have had great resources, even though we complain about we're not at the national average and we're underfunded, you know, which we are, and we can make that case. On the other hand, we do have tremendous resources here that they don't have in other states. And we don't want to give those things up. I mean, that's the bottom line. We don't want to give those things up. And it's so troubling to see what this governor is trying to do, because he's really messing with sacred trust. I mean, that's the way I look at it. When you target out specific programs like EOPS and disabled students and some of the other programs that he targeted when he went down that list of 25 categorical programs and said, "I'm gonna cut their budget," but you don't cut EOPS 45% or disabled students 45%. I mean, no governor has ever done that before. And it's audacious, you know, it's outrageous that he's doing this. And yet we have to deal with the political reality that he may get away with it. And I want to talk about that today. I want to talk about some of the implications of what the governor's doing and our own situation here at Delta. You know, in a way, I'm tired of this whole budget thing, as I'm sure you are, but it's our life now. I mean, we're gonna deal with it every day until we're through this crisis, and we just have to buckle up and take it on. And even before the governor came out with his announcement of what he was proposing for this year and for next year in the state budget, we were in a slightly difficult situation. We had some unfunded liabilities that we're dealing with, and I've been through those before. Things like increased energy costs and, you know, match for maintenance funds and other things that we just came up that were not in the budget that we had to deal with. And that was about $2 million. And then the governor's bombshell hit, and that increased it up to about 8.3%, so about $4.7 million that we're told we're gonna have to cut out of the budget this year. Although, we're still not even sure, as I said, because the May revise may have the right information. It may happen before then. The legislature looked like they were very close to cutting a deal on our budget and a number of other things. And then it all fell apart at the last minute because of the vehicle license fee. So, you know, it's like up and down. It's like we're on sea and the waves are knocking us about, and it looks good one day, or at least, not good, but at least better than what I had looked the day before. And then all of a sudden, the bottom falls out and we're down the slope again. It's a difficult thing to deal with. To make this all worse, you know, we're looking at more of those unfunded liabilities in the future. I think you all know that our health costs are increasing at double-digit rate every year. In fact, it's something that we all need to be worried about, because we've been looking at the numbers, and we're very close to coming up to that 10% cap that's written into all of the contracts with our employee groups, that the district will only cover 10% of the healthcare costs. And we're very close to going over that threshold. In fact, I think the projection is for sometime next year. Next year, actually, we would get to that point. And so that means we'd all have to dish out money out of our pocket to pay for our healthcare. And it could be as high as $300 and some dollars a month. You know, it's outrageous. These are the things we're dealing with, statewide and college-wide. We were very lucky in the recent past, we didn't have to pay for PERS for several years because their investments were doing so well. And they said, you know, "We really don't need the money, let's give relief." And we all know what happened to the stock market and what happened to those investments. And so, PERS has said they're going to increase the fee next year, they're gonna actually charge. And then the year after that, it could go up to a double-digit increase. That's not good news. And STIRS is saying the same thing, they're going to have an increase as well. I already mentioned the increasing energy costs, we're still sorting through that. We're part of a consortium, so that has been helpful to us. But we know that those costs are going to increase, and they won't even sign a long-term deal with us anymore. We had a multi-year deal in the past, and now we're lucky if we get a three-month deal because the market is so volatile and the costs are changing all the time. So it's gonna be from contract to contract, you know, what our energy costs are going to come out as. We just don't know. And we're under a number of legal mandates, and that can have lots of repercussions on us. To give you one example, I mentioned that the governor wanted to cut the disabled students program. And he couldn't have chosen a worse target for a cut, because we're already struggling with the budget in that area because of some mandates that were under, legal mandates. For example, since last July, from last July to December, we spent probably $240,000 on interpreters for deaf students. And that's a good thing. You know, we should have interpreters for our deaf students, but the cost has just become astronomical. $240,000 in a six-month period. That's a high cost. It's how do you deal with it in a small program with a small budget? And when, you know, we have about 35 deaf students, from what I understand, and that group is taking a disproportionate amount of the resources in that program, which is something that they really need. It's not that it's not legitimate, it is. The cost has just gone through the roof. And so that takes away from services from other students, because we don't have the money to do everything that we'd like to do. And that's the situation that we're being forced into by this budget crisis. There are other things I could go over. I mean, the governor's budget, his proposal for an 18-month period of $1 billion. I don't know about you, but I have a really hard time getting my mind around $1 billion being cut out of our budget statewide. It's nothing we ever dreamed of. In our worst nightmare, I don't think we ever thought that a governor would pose a cut like that for the community colleges. It's just unfathomable. How do you, you know, look at the community colleges who are serving students who are the most needy, the students who are low-income? You look at our community, the students that we serve. Why do we have the fifth-largest financial aid program out of the 108 community colleges? It's not because our students are well-to-do and because they have money, it's because they have a huge financial need. So our students are low-income students. You look at our population, it's so diverse here at Delta College. It's one of the great features of this college, that we have such diversity in our students. It's one of the things that attracted me here to Delta College. I know it attracts other people, and it's great to see it when you walk across campus. But the governor has targeted those students. He's targeted the disabled students. He's targeted women, because most of our students in the community college system are women, the majority of our students are women. So how can a governor who targets women, students of color, low-income students, disabled students, how can he get away with this? Thing is, we can't let him. And at the end of this presentation, I'm gonna ask Connie Cochran to come up and tell you what you can do about it, because nothing is going to change if we all sit back, we rub our hands together and we lament, we say, "Isn't it terrible? Aren't our local administrators bad because they're doing these bad things?" Well, you know, it's not us. It's really not us. It's, we're in a situation where, you know, I don't know if I have Aztec blood or not, you know, being Mexican, but we all know the Aztecs did sacrifices, blood sacrifices. And I kind of feel like we're in that situation where, you know, we're being forced to sacrifice ourselves. It's almost like saying, "I'm gonna sacrifice, I'm being forced to sacrifice my body, and I have the choice to cut off three body parts, and what are those parts gonna be? Am I gonna cut off my foot? Am I gonna cut off my hand? Am I gonna cut off an ear? My nose?" You know, it's a horrible choice. Who would want to make those kinds of choices? And that's a situation that we're being put in by this budget and by the governor. I don't want to cut any programs, I don't want to do that. I don't want to cut the disabled students program, I don't want to cut EOPS, I don't want to cut classes. And yet that's what we're going to have to do if it stands the way it is. At this point, I'd like to open it up, and really what today is about is just to answer your questions and put any rumors that are out there to rest, if we can. So this is really for you, because I deal with this every day, from morning till night. So this is your meeting. So please, raise your hand, ask questions. Yes?
Do you know if there's gonna be a summer program?
Yes, there is. We're planning to have summer school. Our sister colleges down the road in Yosemite District, Modesto and Columbia, have decided they're not going to have summer school. But we are going to have it, and we think, you know, we made a strong commitment to our students, and we want to complete that commitment to them. I don't think we're yet in the position where we'd have to go that far to cancel summer school, and I hope we're not in that position. I think it can actually be a boon to us in a lot of ways, because summer school, we can run relatively inexpensively compared to the classes during the regular year, so... And we're also gonna have a lot of students coming to us from Modesto. They're gonna try to come and seek courses here, so I hope our students register early because there's gonna be a lot of competition for those courses. So yes, we're planning to have summer school, we're not backing off of that commitment. You know, if I look at you and call on you and I don't say your name, it may be because I don't know your name, but it may well be because I don't have my glasses and I just see a lot of faces out there and...
[inaudible]
Yes, Lynn?
Hey, I'm Rhonda Sturrock, I wanna say thank you, I'm a faculty member and I have a job that's here.
That's right, that's right.
I'm very grateful you, the college you have. This is something I had to mention to you today, but it's something like you and POC and all of the adjuncts back with me, we're all concerned about programs.
Sure.
The programs that are applying to you, they are English and nursing support. It's big, but how are we, or how can we implement it? And I don't think the academic program, the adjuncts, the...
Well, that's a difficult question and a difficult task to accomplish, because if we're actually forced sometime in the future into layoffs, and, you know, I talked with CEOs at other colleges, and I talked with John Heard this morning, Superintendent President Cabrillo, and talked to him about what they were doing, and they're planning to lay off a few faculty this spring, just in categorical programs, but they're not planning any big layoffs. But, you know, he's saying, as we're all saying, if next year is really as bad as we think it's going to be, how can you avoid it? How can you avoid it? If our, this is a roundabout way to answer your question, so just bear with me for a while. If our healthcare costs get up to the, you know, 10% and above level, and then you look at salaries, we're already 80% of our budget plus is salaries and benefits. Then you have fixed costs that you have, you know, you gotta, as I've said before, you have to have the lights on, you have to have the heat on, you have to have the air conditioning. There are other things that you just have to have, or else you might as well just pack it up and go home. So you can't cut those things. You can try to save, you know, do it in a cost-effective way, but you can't cut them out completely. So where do you cut your budget when you're given the size of cuts that we're being asked to look at? Because if you add it up, you know, 8.3% this year, it could be 11% next year, that's almost 20% of our budget. Where do you cut? You have to get down to people, because that's the biggest part of our, there's no way around it. I wish there was, but I don't know, you know, what way there is. You know, we can be creative all we want, we can go out and try to generate new revenue, we can talk about things like everybody take a 1% pay cut, or people go on furloughs and all that. It's not gonna, those things will help, and we should explore those things and see if we can actually implement some of them, but they're not going to get us where we need to go by themselves. So when we lay off people, if we do, there won't be adjunct work in those areas where we have to make layoffs, that's just the way it is. You have to, before you can get to a full-time faculty member, all the adjuncts are gone. And so, nobody wants to go through that. As I've said before, that those of us who've been through this before, who've been through a reduction in force, who've been through these kinds of budget cuts, who've been through elimination of programs, you don't relish that, you don't ever want to experience that again. But when you sign up for these jobs, that unfortunately, sometimes that can be part of it. It's not the good times, but it's part of the job. So hopefully, we will be able to maintain adjuncts in certain areas, but at this point, how can you tell? It's just too far. In the future, there are too many unknowns, too many factors, we just can't measure at this point in time, we can't really get a good handle on, so I don't know.
So, you're at this case, obviously, you have talked about that, and allow program areas where, maybe you are legally supported by adjuncts or...
Yeah, I think we have to have those kinds of conversations, definitely, and we have to really look through our program review process and start looking at our program reviews and helping us make decisions if we get to that point where we have to look at what we might have to cut. Yeah, we have to go with the information that we have and try to develop a process where all that information is taken into account. Yes, sir?
I've been here for 16 years and doing that, and I've never broken involved with an institution, because it's like, that's the goal, it's the thing that happens all the time. So it's just a blame, and we're obviously trying to work, and outside contracts, and it's just a job.
Right.
Finding the time to solve it, to figure out what's good, and so it's just a question of interpretation and just of interpretation.
Yeah.
Because I found that the learning disability is a blame and everything on the gap. And there isn't anybody else?
Sure.
Everybody's blaming the gap.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate your position. I didn't mean to single out or say anything pejorative about interpreters or disabled students or deaf students. That's not the issue. The issue really is the pot of money that you have and then how you use that money, and sometimes you have no choice. Why I use that example is because we have no choice. We have to provide interpreters. And the costs have gone up. You know, we have to, we can't, we haven't been able to get our own interpreter, so we have to use an outside service, which is very expensive, and it's a supply and demand issue. Interpreters are, you know, very highly in demand, and when you're in demand, you can then, you know, ask for higher wages and get them. So it's a simple issue. I didn't mean anything negative at all, but it's a simple reality. And this happens in other areas. When I was, a long time ago, when I, in another life, when I did research, I worked at Langley Porter Psychiatric Institute in San Francisco at UCSF, and we were commissioned to do a study on psychiatric emergency services. And because they couldn't figure out why, at the end of every year, they'd overspent their budget, and they didn't know where the money was going, and they were really at a loss, they couldn't get a handle on. As it turned out, when we did the study, what we found out is that there was one population who was using the services disproportionately, and they had not planned for that in their budget. And so we were able to point that out, they were able to adjust their budget, do some things to change that. And so that's, that's the kind of analogy I was trying to make. It really wasn't directed at any one group. I could have used other examples like that, but that was one that came to mind because we're dealing with it in terms of our budget reality. And it is using a large chunk of money in a small program budget. So it's, as I said, it's something we're committed to, we have to do it, there's a legal mandate, and it's the proper thing to do, it's the correct thing to do. But I wish we had more money in that program to do everything, because what happens is when you, one group uses a disproportionate amount of the services, and somebody else is not gonna get maybe the things that they need over here. And that's just the way it is. And that can be across the college. That's what we're dealing with. Yes, Manuel?
When I could add, back to you, get some, get some managers talking about, that's your budget adaptation, you know, you use some of that, part of that factor, whether to, that is, and then where else to put that factor?
Right.
And so that being said, you already have a list of classified freshmen for full reservations in the budget reduction.
Right.
So that's really administration's topic.
Mm-hmm.
But what really is the administration's part of the district budget reduction, I mean, possible layoffs there?
Yeah, well, I met with the managers last Friday and let them know that all the managers below the vice president's level will be getting a March 15 notice if the board allows me to do that. I plan to ask the board before March 15 to allow me to do that. And because I think it's important to, if we are going to have layoffs, and I really in the long run don't see how we're going to avoid them unless there's some miracle that happens at the last minute, that we have to begin with managers first. I mean, we have to do that. And that's, again, that's a matter of priorities, it's a matter of, you know, making a tough decision and then sticking with it because it relates to the principles that you're following and your priorities. And it was unfortunate, I don't want to, I didn't want to do that, it was tough to do that. You know, you want your management team to be totally behind you, and yet you have to go say something like that to them, and I can imagine how they felt, because I've been there before. I received a March 15 notice. I know that sick feeling that you get in your stomach when you get a notice like that, you think to yourself, "Am I not worth anything? Don't they appreciate what I do? Don't they care about me? You know, how could they do this to me?" I mean, I know all those things that they're going to experience when this happens, and so it's not willingly that I, it's not that I sought that out, it's what I felt, you know, they had to do, to make a strategic move for the college and to try to help us to get through this budget crisis. And why I did the, why I want to do the blanket March 15 notice instead of just selecting certain people, because I don't know at this point in time exactly how many or what that's gonna be. I don't think it's gonna be very many, but I need to have that flexibility to, as the situation evolves, to figure out who that's going to be. And that could actually help in the long run to save jobs, because we're looking desperately trying to find whatever we can in the budget to stop from having to lay people off. We don't want to do that. I think we're gonna try to do everything we can to keep from doing that. And that's what happened with the faculty, and I hope the same thing happens with classified and with managers. But, and I'm an optimistic person, and I hope that happens, but I don't know that it will, so we have to prepare just in case that's not the case. Yes?
I would say you want to be flexible on the use of the reserves that Delta may have and the board.
Well, not too flexible, I have to say. And I say that because I know the way the board feels about it, and this is, and I've talked about this before as well, the board, this board is very fiscally conservative. And there's a strong feeling among them that they don't want Delta to be dragged down into an untenable financial situation. I think Delta's always had a reputation for being very sound fiscally, and they don't want that to change. You know, it's possible that we may go down a little bit more than where we are now, we're about 5%, and we could go down a little bit. But I think they get really nervous, and I do too, thinking that we might get anywhere close to 3%, which is, then you go on the state watch list. And if we go down any farther and we have a huge emergency, you know, and I've been through this before, at Los Madanos, we had a boiler-chiller system go out, and it cost us $1 million to repair it. And if something like that happens and you've spent down your reserves, then you're really in trouble. So, you know, I think there's a feeling among the board, and I feel the same way, that we have to be very careful about how we use those reserves, because the long run is we have to maintain the fiscal integrity of this organization and make sure that we don't get on the watch list, or we don't get into an emergency that we can't pay for and have somebody from the outside come in and take over the college.
Well, I'm the same line as Manuel, so, I don't want, first and I don't want to see anybody with a job.
Yeah.
But, on the other hand, in classified positions, there's a earmark so far at 672,000, I would say, managing positions at 112,000. I don't think we should try to vote on the maximum classified staff. The only way I can think of that would be equitable solution, and that includes that, would be a percentage cut. And I don't know how far you have looked into that, but 1% may not do it. I understand that. But if this goes, you know, we talk about the Delta family so much, well, we're ever gonna be a family, now's the time to do it.
I appreciate your point of view, and I don't necessarily disagree with everything you said at the same time. I think I've clearly stated that our priority is our core mission, and that is, you know, classroom instruction, you know, transfer, locational occupational education, and then there are other things, you know, farther out from that. But that is the core of what we do, and that's faculty who do that work. We just have to admit that, that's what we were created for, that's the purpose by which we exist, and we have to make priorities. And we are a family, yet families also have to make hard priorities at times. You know, it's not equitable across the board all the time. And that's why I say, you know, I'm gonna look to cut management first, and then if we need to go farther, then we'll cut classified, and then in the future, if we have to go even farther, then it would be faculty next year. Yes?
Dr. Rodriguez, where do you retire at this time, is that a concept, or do you look at candidates, they help?
I hope so. Yes, I hope so. That we're looking at that right now, and hopefully at this next Tuesday's board meeting, we'll take a package to the board and get their consent to move forward and try to offer an incentive to people to retire if they're close to retirement. Yes, we want to do, I think that's something we definitely have to do, and that could help tremendously, that could help save jobs if we get enough people to go out. Yeah? Yes?
Dr. Rodriguez, for four years, as soon as I mentioned, worked with a GED program.
Hmm?
As a matter of fact, I was trying to translate to English because they thought it was a weakened program. We have, you know, we have a staff coordinator, we work with the AEP, we generate funds through RAN. What would happen to the GED program if you had to cut over?
No, Pedro, I don't know for sure. I can't talk about any particular program with any level of confidence at this point in time, because there are so many unknowns. But I would say that, you know, if we start down that road and we start cutting, you know, you're gonna look at categorical programs, you're gonna look at programs that are farther out from our mission, and I see the GED program as being farther out from our mission. And I know that you work in the program, and you probably don't feel that way, but, and I know it's a pipeline that brings us students, but at the same time, you look at our mission that we've been given by the legislature, and it clearly spells out the things that we should be doing, the primary activities, the secondary activities, and that is not in the primary activities, and you can make an argument that it's farther out in some of the secondary activities. But, you know, I think it's not the thing that is primary core to our mission. It's a valuable program. You know, I went there the other day and spoke to the students, and I really enjoyed that, and I hope that we illuminated them about the budget situation. But, you know, if you have to make hard decisions, as I said, you might have to cut off your hand, you may have to cut, you don't want to do it, but you have to do it. And before we would cut, you know, English, or, you know, science, or math, any of the GE or the occupational programs that we have here, we're gonna have to look at programs that, you know, maybe aren't those core courses, those core programs, rather. And it's unfortunate, but that's the way, you know, you have to make tough decisions when you only have so much money. I mean, it's like your checking account. If you're spending more money than you're bringing in, you have a problem, and you have to rectify it. You have to reduce. You have to cut out your cable TV. You have to cut out shopping at Nordstrom's, or whatever it might be. You have to bring it back into control, and that's what we're talking about. We can't do everything for everyone if we don't have the money to do it. Could you stand up, because I can't really hear?
Do you have a prioritized mission of programs that we will first implement if it comes to that?
No, not yet. I think we would probably have to do some, have some discussion and have some, you know, meetings around that and try to come up with some type of a priority list or priority categories, if you will, based on our mission, that kind of thing. Yeah, we're not there yet, but I think we would have to definitely have that kind of a discussion. And again, program review and other information that we have would be very helpful in going through that kind of a process. Yes?
Dr. Rodriguez, last year, I know that we spent nearly $3 million on our short-term employees. Do you know what the current budget is for short-term employees this year?
I don't know offhand. I know we've cut that down considerably, but I don't know, I can't give you a total right at this point in time, but we can find that out for you and get that information out. And I'll put that on my next budget update, okay? Go ahead. Forever, I can't see that far. Okay. Go ahead.
I have heard several rumors about paying the foreign language classes.
I've heard a rumor about that, too. One of the instructors sent me an email and said, "Is it true when you were at Los Madanos that you cut all the foreign language courses other than Spanish?" And, and I said, "No, I did not." In fact, when I got there, they really only had a couple of foreign languages. I think they had Chinese, they had Spanish, and there was one other one. But they didn't, they didn't have French, they didn't have German, they didn't have Russian, you know, the full range of courses that we have here. And I was a little, you know, chagrined by it because I wanted to take a French course because when I was an undergraduate, I did academic year abroad in France, and it'd been a long time, and I'd forgotten all my French, and I wanted to get a brush-up. And I would have had to gone to my, our sister college Diablo Valley, which I did not want to do because I didn't like the folks over there at Diablo Valley College. And so, I was very upset that we didn't have a French course at LMC. And in fact, I told this instructor, "Contact the chair of the department at LMC, and they'll give you all the facts. There's no way, there's no truth to that rumor, and there's no truth to the rumor that we're looking to cut foreign language courses at this point in time." I mean, the future, who knows? We may have to cut all kinds of things. If the governor gets his way and asks for a billion dollars out of our budget, and the state budget, and he gets it, that's going to be a disaster. Who knows what we would have to cut? But there's no plan to do that, no.
But you're assuming that German, French, and English are languages that have to be cut.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I like French, I like German, you know? They're good languages. Yes?
Dr. Rodriguez, College High School, could it be a big priority?
You mean the middle college high school? That is a great partnership, and I'm so glad we have it. And they just received a big grant. I think it was a federal grant that would cover all the costs for that program, or the majority of it. You know, Delta has not put any money into that program. That's, some people have the opinion that that's taking money away from other things. But that's not really Delta's program. It's Lowdi Unified's program, and they're paying the bill, much in the same way that we're starting the summer math institute this summer that, you know, I've done at other colleges where I've been, and I really believe in it. But Delta's not going to pay the bill for that either. It's Stockton Unified that's going to use their summer school money to pay for that program. So, it's no cost to us, really. I mean, there's some fringe costs that really don't add up to any, we're talking pennies, you know, versus, you know, big dollars in other programs. And the main thing that they use is space. You know, we are giving them space, and that's it. They're not getting general fund dollars or anything else that's taking away from other programs. So, I think that's a great program. I hope that we continue it. They're going through their own budget cuts as well, and they've assured me that they're maintaining their commitment to that program, and that's one of the reasons why they went out and got a grant. So, it would help them to complete their commitment to the program so they wouldn't have to cut that as they're going through their own budget cuts. So, they would maintain that as a priority, and the only way they can do that is with outside money. Yes?
Dr. Rodriguez, are you looking at Delta College changing from $18,000 to campus to $16,000 to campus to $13,000? That's the issue we're concerned about, is our budget.
Yes. I think if you look back over history, what's happened whenever we've been in a tough budget situation, a crisis, and that's essentially what's happened. They've done it different ways. When they put in the $50 differential fee, you know, the number of students dropped. And before that, you know, we had a drop in students with Prop 13 and other things that we've gone through. So, every time we go through one of these crises, that seems to be one of the goals, is to force us to reduce our enrollment so that we're not taking as much money away from the state budget as we otherwise would be. So, I don't, you know, that's not something I want to see. It's not something I'm promoting, but it may be the reality that occurs, and maybe what happens, just because of everything else that we're dealing with. And so, we may be pulled, forced to be, to pull back, to cut courses more, to cut programs even, and that's what would be the result of it. And that's why I told the board, if this budget situation stands the way it is with what the governor's asking, we're looking at a five-to-10-year road to recover from it because Delta College will not be the college it is today, and it will just take us a long time to build up to where we were. There's just no way around it. It will be, you know, it's too strong maybe to say a shell of the college we were, but we certainly won't have the range of programs and the range of services that we enjoy today. Yes, Manuel?
Dr. Rodriguez, how about programs, how about eliminating that, etc., in the budget process? Or, when you say something like, "What if they program elimination, that we eliminate" ?
It could, it could. I mean, I think it's, we don't know. It could be all kinds of things. It could be many programs. Yeah, those probably, those kinds of programs, unless they have outside funding that would support them, they're all, you know, it's all fair, you know, for the, as we look for cuts, it's, everything's up. It's, you know, we, as I said, we look at our mission, and Puente is, you know, is part of our core mission, so it's oriented towards transfer. And Mesa, too, you know, trying to get students into engineering and advanced courses and so on. So, in that regard, you know, you could make an argument that they are part of the core mission that we do, but other programs that are not, you know, may not be in the same place. And so, that's why I talked about, the question was asked about making priorities. That's what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to look at that and make those kinds of determinations.
Is that in contact with the governor's president, President Sotomayor, the death zone, West Coast?
Right.
They're not, just in the state of need, are they professionals, and yet, they see the big picture, that's happening, that's happening. We don't get a budget professional plan, or is that what I'm doing?
I don't think we are. If you talk to the state chancellor's office, you know, the way they characterize it, you know, one-third of the colleges are just kind of sitting on their hands and not doing anything, just talking. There's another one-third that are just, they're going out there, they're cutting people, they're cutting programs. They're just way, way ahead of the curve. And then there's another one-third who's trying to assess, they're trying to plan, they're trying to go about it in a, you know, step-by-step manner, and, you know, discussing things, too, as they go along, but they are taking action. I think we're in that category. I think we're in that middle group that's, you know, we're not holding back. At the same time, we're not out in the forefront, and we haven't made, you know, huge cuts yet. We're talking about them, what the outcomes could be, what the, what could happen. And yet, we're trying to meet certain targets, you know, too. Because as I said, we had the $2 million we had to cut out this year, and then, you know, we have to account for some of what the governor's saying. We just can't ignore the information that's out there because we are going to have to cut. It's just not clear at this point how deep it's going to go. So, I don't think we're, you know, acting inappropriately.
Is there any, or are the victims willing to be tested by?
No. No, no, no. That's an idea that has been raised, but as I've said to the academic senate, that is a long-term process when you do that. And right now is not the time to do that. Not even, you know, we, maybe you can bring up the idea and discuss it, but, and I've talked with Dr. Arce about it, that that's down the road, you know, because it takes a long time to have those discussions, and it really is consultation, it really is a participatory governance kind of issue. And so, you have to make sure that everyone understands, that faculty discuss it thoroughly, that everyone's on board with, you know, it's, I've been through it before. It's a long process. It's not something you can just, you know, have happen right away under the time pressures that we're under now with the budget situation. So, that's, we've delayed that discussion for later, and it's not, we're not considering it now.
One more comment?
Yes?
That kind of impact, this last part, I have a little contact with our students.
I know that.
So, the reason why anybody's on here, that it's a truth. So, I would, my supervision, really look at where they cut, but if it does, then we cut it. Where, how much does that affect the student?
Right. I agree. Yes, sir?
Just a question about, you mentioned the potential retirement incentives.
Yes.
Is that going to apply to everyone, so the administrators and classified faculty, or is it just a golden handshake?
It's not a golden handshake, but it will be some type of incentive. And we, as I said, we haven't even fully determined what that is, and there's a proposal, a couple of proposals that we're working on, and we hope to have that in shape to take it to the board next Tuesday night, and then you'll get the details if the board approves it. Yes, Roger?
One of the issues, when you talk about the smaller involvement, where is the current issue?
Yes.
Well, one of the issues, I know we talked about that, rolling against Tracy and expanding programs, and aren't there, we're dying to die, and I hope.
Yeah. Right.
How do you ensure something's out in my area? Are you going to maintain those programs, or are you wanting to try to keep the core campus here, this whole part?
Well, I think we want to keep the core campus strong, definitely. And that's, this is our main campus. But I also think that we're so far entrenched in Tracy and so committed to that, we're not going to back off of our commitment to Tracy. And I don't think we're doing that much in the other areas that, I mean, we could pull some of that back. You know, I don't know. We'll have to look at that and make that decision as we go along, but, you know, we still want to serve our entire service area. We still want to offer services to everyone. But it may be compromised a little bit in these next few years, certainly because of the budget. There's no way around that. We're not going to be able to do everything the way we want to do it. But at the same time, we still need to plan because meanwhile, we're, as we're going through this budget crisis and maybe having to pull some things back, the population is still growing. Our service area is growing, and at some point, we're going to have to deal with the needs of that service area in a very direct way. And so, we need to continue the planning for those efforts as we go through these difficult times. Yes, back there, Astro.
Can I ask a last question? If you're going to eliminate, if you're going to eliminate, if you're going to eliminate the, if you're going to eliminate?
Right. Yes. We haven't yet. That's what I would like to do. I, we will have that discussion. I've asked them, the CSU to meet with me on a weekly basis, and so, I will discuss it with them, with the executive group. But, you know, I think if you look at it logically, I mean, if you want to save those positions and keep them on the books, that's fine. That's why I said it could either be eliminate or long-term hold, or put it in deep freeze, if you will. It doesn't matter to me which way it is. All I know is we're not going to hire anybody in those positions for quite a while, so you can call it what you want. And if we, you know, some managers added those positions as a budget savings and some didn't. So, what we need to go do is go back and add up that savings and then add it into the whole mix of reductions, and that might help save some jobs, too. That's why I want to do that. It's not because I want to be mean and take away those positions. I'm trying to save jobs, you know? I don't want to lay people off at this point in time if I can avoid it. So, that's why we're doing that. But we'll have the discussion, sure. Yes?
So, I thought you mentioned that the whole information of the public is concerned that location, that transfer of students.
Right.
And for all of us concerned in the media, for us to know that we are the ones who can't give it something, can go to the transfer location.
Yes.
If we are cutting all the programs, when do we see our students?
Well, probably from CSU and UC because they've raised their fees and they will be redirected here, you know? And we'll have our local students, too, you know, I don't know. When we go through these budget situations, it's not logical. It's not logical at all. And when UC and CSU raise their fees, we know we get students coming to us that would have gone there because they don't want to pay the higher fees. And they push students who would otherwise be here, you know, out the classroom door at times. So, those are hard realities, but those are some of the things that happen when you go through these crises. Yes?
A question, oh, upon the not refilling the divisions that are left vacant.
Hmm.
One scenario, what if one particular division or discipline just happens to have a number of retirees, people to leave, and they are in critical need in some other divisions where no one happens to leave? You're going to end up with one division being in good shape and one in dire straits.
Yeah.
Do anything to address that?
Yes. We've, you know, we've talked about that. I think what we need to do is look at shifting people around internally here at the college and taking people from some areas and moving them to areas that really have a demonstrated and extraordinary need, to try to shift our resources about using the best we can before we actually go out and hire a new position. So, I think other college districts are doing this. I talked to the chancellor up at Los Rios last week, and he said that's what they were doing. They're moving people around all across their district in that manner. And so, I think we need to look at doing some of that as well, to try to, as you said, not leave a division or a department in the lurch and not being able to fulfill their duties. Yes?
Where is that role of the OCS and CARE students in our audience today? And you're also students who take advantage of the exposure center.
Hmm.
Besides writing legislators, because they've already received that, have passed already, what can you tell them to explain their fear and self-belief, under the anxiety based on the fact that there's a proposal out there to cut almost 50% of funding?
I don't know if I can reduce their anxiety. You know, that would be false if I tried to do it because I just don't know, any more than anyone else knows, what is actually going to happen with this budget process. And, you know, Janice, you were there in Sacramento. You went around to see the different legislators, and what kind of a reception did you get?
Like having, giving like a toast. It gave me grief to my step.
So, yeah, I mean, it wasn't a warm welcome. It wasn't, gee, we really understand, you know, we're going to bat for your issues. That wasn't the reception that you got.
I mean, what I'm looking for is what kind of commitment can the college make in light of the fact that these funds may be cut?
And, you know, if you've been listening to what I'm saying, it is that I don't know at this point in time. Ideally, if a cut like that occurred, you'd want to backfill it with other money that you have at the college. We may not have that luxury. We may not have other money to shift over there. You know, it's, it's a matter of not having enough to do everything that we want to do, and that's the simple reality of it. I hope that's not the case, but it sure looks like that's what's going to happen. So, I can't, you know, I wish I could say magic words or tell you the things that you want to hear, but, you know, I think we have to be realistic in looking at this. And, you know, I guess I'm a student of the late '60s, early '70s, you know? I was involved in protests when I was in college, and, boy, if there's ever a time where we need to revive that mentality and go to Sacramento and have sit-ins or have teach-ins, or, you know, link our arms and round the Capitol and, you know, not let anybody get in or out, you know, until we get press coverage and get people to understand our issue. Because people do not understand our issue. Mary Ann Cox told me the other day about a conversation she'd had with a leading citizen here in Stockton who said, "Gee, we want to help with, you know, what's going on with the college, and we know, you know, you're a vocational college and all your vocational courses are being cut." Well, you know, that person right there doesn't understand what we're about. They don't understand our mission. They don't understand all the broad array of services and programs that we have, the range of students that we serve. They think we're a vocational school. If our local citizens think that, somebody who's very well-educated, who's involved in all kinds of activities in this community, if they have that impression of Delta College, my, what do other people think? Now, we need to tell our story better. We need to get out there and get in the newspapers. We need to get to our legislators. We need to get to the people who are sitting on the key committees in the legislature and put the pressure on them because that's what it's going to take. It's going to take an extraordinary effort for all the community colleges to put the pressure on, just as we did last year when the governor tried to cut $98 million out of our budget. We got together and we put some pressure on him. I think we need to call it what it is. I think we need to call it what it is. We need to say that these cuts, they're classes cuts, they're racist cuts, they're sexist cuts, they discriminate against disabled students, he's picking on the people who are least able to defend themselves, and he thinks he can get away with it, and we have to prove him wrong. We have to prove that legislature and the governor cannot get away with this. We can't let them. And I don't know what time it is, but Connie's supposed to take us on to the next steps, and I don't have my watch today, and I don't see a clock, so I don't even know where we are in terms of time. Okay, is another hand somewhere?
In regards to what Janice was just saying, I'm likely, like everybody here, to our ground, we have plans to market teams on the west steps of the Capitol. And our goal is to have 8,000 students and faculty and classifieds that are participants in the community college system in order to do exactly what Governor Greig is saying that we need to do. So without your help, this will become a reality, and we will provide intensive buses and everything, we will have as many buses as we need, carry as many people as we can in order to make this a reality, and hopefully change the minds of those people, all those like committees, all the higher education committees, and try to get a point of view with all those people to believe that we just flood the governor's office with people, bodies, with a story to tell, and need that we can be met. So we will be sending out information, we're currently sending it through on campus email as well as wire, and if you're interested to keep in contact with students, government, and we can find as well, either way, if you stay in contact with us and if you're serious about trying to help other students, we need your support.
Let me just say that I think we're out of time, I need to turn it over to Connie, but if this was helpful, we can do it again once or twice before the end of the semester. And I'm also having the small brown bag lunch groups than we had our first one last week, and I really enjoyed it immensely, and we talked for an hour and a half about the budget and about different issues at the college, and many of you will be invited to those brown bag luncheon meetings, and I hope that if you're invited, that you attend so we can, because this large group format doesn't work for everyone, so I want to give people different types of formats in which to ask their questions and to get the information. So thank you very much, and Connie's going to tell you what we can do next.
And everyone that's leaving, I'm sure you've already written your letters to your legislators. I need to make, I cannot emphasize this enough, that you need to write to your legislator, and there are lots of tools available for you to do that. You need to tell them your story. When we went back, when we went to Sacramento, as I know many of you do with the associations that you belong to, we heard over and over again from our legislators, "Don't give me statistics. That I can get anywhere, that I get every day, I am flooded with statistics, I need your personal stories." When they're making their arguments on our behalf in their committees and/or on the floor, they need your personal stories. So it's really important that you send them your real person's story. A lot of folks have asked me for postcards or form letters, and unfortunately, those just don't carry a lot of weight with legislators. Yesterday, a tool was forwarded to you that CCLC put together where they do have four canned statements that will be sent out and launched through their website if you log on, but those carry about the same amount of weight with a legislator as a postcard. Actually, they become more irritating because most legislators are not very good at checking their email, and in fact, Barbara Matthews doesn't even have email for that reason. So we have some letter writing tools available for you on DocuShare, and some folks, I guess, are not familiar with DocuShare, but if you go to the main website and if you click on staff or faculty tab, you'll actually see DocuShare across the top as an option. It's also on online services under both those tabs, which is on the left-hand side of the screen, and then you go in there and it's the top item under divisions and departments, a state budget update. But if you have not, or if you're not comfortable with DocuShare, from now on, I'll send the link as well as I begin to update information there. So it's really important that you get your letters written and send them not only to your personal legislators, but also to those key committee members, the speakers of the assembly and the senate, the Chair of the budget committees, the Chair of the higher ed committees. And so, but, you know, if you send an email, that's a good thing, but be sure and paste that into a letter and put a letter in the mail as well. I understand there's faculty out there giving extra credit for students who actually write letters to their legislators, and that's a great thing. Guidance and Counseling also has letter writing instructions that helps students and tell them exactly how to write a letter and how to tell their story, and I think they're also providing stamps for those as well. If you're not comfortable writing a letter, call me, call Karen Mockman, my office, we will, we will write the letter for you if we must. And just tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your story, and we'll write your story. Engage your friends and neighbors. You have, each and every one of us have a huge circle of influence. We do need more things in the paper, but those are generated not, you know, the media doesn't take that from me, I'm the spokesperson, they need to hear it from you, they need to hear it from the people that you are working with on committees, they need to hear it from your friends and from your neighbors. So it's really important that if you're out there, you know, in your front yard raking leaves, be sure and stop your neighbors and tell them about our plight. When you sit on committees, you know, if I'm on a board or a committee, I grab the microphone and take a few minutes to tell people about our situation. So you really need to take advantage of your circle of influence and get other people writing letters for us as well. We'll have some samples of that soon. I know Jan Truscott has put together a letter that she's going to send out to her business partners and ask them to write on our behalf, get them thinking about what the impact is going to be for them as soon as the fact that we're the number-one training resource for their employees. They need to be reminded of this, and we need to be better about telling our story, as Dr. Rodriguez said. So postcards, they have their application, but this is not going to be easy. It's really important that you tell your story. If you go on your way out on the back table, I've pre-printed labels for you to all the major legislators in our area. There are number 10 envelopes there that are blank, so you can pull a label. If you don't know who your legislator is, you can look them up by zip code, I've got zip code lists there, and I've got a few copies of the letter writing toolkit that I put on DocuShare. I'm glad Angela mentioned her particular demonstration that the students are putting together, and if, you know, you grew up in the 60s and 70s, I asked them, "What can we do, you know, can we help you, can we tie-dye t-shirts for you or something?" But we, you know, we all know how to do that, and it is very effective, not tie-dye t-shirts, but we know how to demonstrate. And I think it's really important that we help them and we go with them, and we have a show of force. And they have already pulled a permit for demonstration on the west steps of the Capitol, and if you have the opportunity and you can join them on that day, that would be great because their goal is to get enough people that they actually have to pull, get porta-potties. So they, you know, that, if they have that many people, we know we have success. CCLC also has converted all their traditional lobbying days now to demonstration days. So the Community College League is going to have a demonstration day on the 17th, so if you can't be there on the 18th of March with our students and our college and all of the people that they're engaging, put it on your calendar and be there with the Community College League on the 17th. So those, you'll get more information about that, more information's forthcoming. So there, we're doing everything we can, we want our legislators to just be inundated with mail, and we want it to be, you know, like Miracle on 34th Street where somebody has to go in and dump bags of mail on their desk because they're hearing from community colleges. So please, tell your story, take the time. If you're not comfortable writing, please call me and I'll help you. So it's going to take all of us, it's not going to be easy, but use all these tools that are at your disposal, and let's just flood them with mail. Okay? Thank you. (applause)